Call this meeting in order, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White. Have the agenda received. This proposal is amended.
I'll move.
Moved and seconded, and any discussion on the favor of I.
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. Next, a discussion by Board of Supervisors and their designated representatives, Patrick Capital, LLC, Beacon Health Management, and Marcus and Milichap regarding the potential sale of Country View Care Facility.
Next. Enter your access code or meeting number followed by pound. Your entry six-two-one-zero-eight-one-six-three-four is not valid, or the meeting has not started yet. Re-enter your access code or meeting number followed by pound. Your entry six-two-one-zero-eight-one-six-three-four is not valid, or the meeting has not started yet. Re-enter your access code or meeting number followed by pound.
Any call us?
Or we can call.
Okay. I can, we can call, or can we, can you, can we dial in Andy on your line and we'll dial you directly? Why don't you call?
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at www webex.com.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Three-one-nine-eight-three-three-three-zero-six-eight. Okay. We're just gonna dial, is that you the phone? We're just gonna dial in with this gentleman here. Well, does he just wanna dial here? That's, that's the phone number right there.
Where do you want?
Yeah, we can, we have, he can call in or we can call him. He said just give it.
So we're not gonna use the, this number?
It's not working.
Well, it said nobody's signed into it.
Couldn't get in?
This probably doesn't change the time.
Oh, yeah, we changed to an hour, two hours earlier. Okay, let's, what we need to do, dialing. Yeah. Let's see if we can dial in directly. Okay. So we just need to dial that number there.
This is Shane.
Hey Shane, it's Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Do you have Andy on?
I'm going to, I'm gonna add him to the call right now, just bear with me.
Okay. Sorry about this one. Yes, we'll change. Find out in a second.
I'll move the mic.
Maybe I should turn it down, and we can always turn it up. A lot of blast people out. Yeah, yes. Shane, you there?
Mark?
Yes. Shane?
Mark?
Yeah, can you hear me?
That's it. Yeah, I, I can hear you. This is Shane, and I think I have Andy on right now as well.
Yes, you do. Hi, Mark. How you doing, Andy Borzamato?
Good. Hey, Andy. So you've got Ryan Fleming with me, and then you have the Blackhawk, Blackhawk County Board and some members of the public, everybody, right?
Correct.
Okay, so probably about forty people in the room, so.
Very good. Absolutely.
That's on the speaker, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we can get started now. Thank you for your flexibility, Andy and Shane and members of the committee.
Well, do you want me, I can go ahead and get started. I just have a, a brief, a brief overview of Beacon. I know the Board of Supervisors have some questions. So Andy and myself can be, are able to kind of follow those questions a little bit for, for the Board and the public. So if you want me to start, I can introduce, I think Andy's kinda introduced himself. I'll, I'll go over a brief history, some operating philosophy, generally about the company and so forth, to kind of give you a better idea of who we are. And then have Andy kinda go through his part, and then open it up to, I think, the Board have some questions. Does that, does that make sense?
That sounds good.
All right, very good. Well, again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share our company with the public and with, with, with the county. We are interested in the asset of Country View. Just a kind of a brief, we were gonna have Vicky Sherard on the call as well. Vicky is our Senior Vice President of Clinical Services, as well as our Chief Compliance Officer. She was unable to attend because she had some other phone calls that she needed to attend to that were urgent. And then Bruce Wertheim, who is our President and CEO of Beacon, is actually traveling in some of our facilities today up in Ohio, so he was unable to attend. But again, my name is Shane Gockel, and I'm the, I'm the Lead Acquisition Manager for this piece, as well as the Director of Reimbursement and Therapy Services for Beacon. And then again with me is Andy Borzamato. Andy is our Chief Financial Director of Finance and Accounting Services for Beacon. So today, we'll just kind of go through a brief overview, and then Andy will share some of his pieces, and then we'll, we'll open it up to, I'm sure there's a lot of questions that the Board would like to ask, and we'd be glad to answer those. So. A little bit about Beacon. We're, we're based in Tampa, Florida. We were, we were formed in two thousand and thirteen by Bruce Wertheim. Just for the management and oversight of long-term care communities. We are currently, we operate twenty-two facilities in two states, in Georgia. We have sixteen facilities. In Ohio, we operate five facilities. Out of those five, one of them is in assisted living. We have about two thousand, about two thousand beds out of those twenty-two facilities, and approximately about a hundred and five million in revenue as a company, just to kind of give you an idea of our size. So we would be considered in the long-term care market, a small-to-medium sized company, but we have, we have grown since two thousand and thirteen. A little history of our company. Bruce Wertheim started the company, like I said, in two thousand and thirteen. He started actually in long-term care as a CFO in two thousand and one. His background is as a CPA. But he, he joined a long-term care company in New York, where they grew a company from about thirty million to almost three hundred and fifty million in a very short period of time, in about a five-year period. They, Bruce was key in acquisitions and also setting up management companies, as well as helping with the financial aspect of, of day-to-day operations for, for the company in New York. And then in August in two thousand and six, he relocated his family down to Tampa, Florida, where he partnered with a group to start another management company, where he owned and operated about seventeen nursing and skilled, assisted-living facilities in the southeast. And then in, in two thousand and thirteen, Bruce founded Beacon Healthcare Management with an acquisition of three management agreements in Georgia. So he put together a pretty small management team. Bruce felt like he could provide some really great services and wanted to strike out on his own, and, and that's, and that's what he did. Since then, we have grown from those three to almost twenty-two facilities in a pretty, pretty short period of time. With that, we were able to grow our, our management services, our support services for our group. One of our management or operating philosophies, I'm sure you as a Board and, and public are, it's a good question to ask any company, is we really, we're pretty flat on top. We don't have a lot of, as some of these large companies, we don't have a lot of overhead, if you will. We have the right strategic overhead, and Bruce really feels like having the, the support services at the regional and facility level are important when you successfully manage a facility, take care of patients, and do what we need to do. So, pretty, pretty flat on top. We're very, all are very much engaged in day-to-day operations, including Bruce himself, which is a pretty, not, not as common in the long-term care arena or industry, but he's very hands-on. He's very engaged with the administrators, and I think that having that kind of support is, is really important. So currently, we are, our, our, our operating, from an acquisition standpoint, we're not looking to grow to be the largest skilled nursing facility provider out there. We are going to look for the right acquisitions in the right locations. We, we want to make sure that we are, we grow responsibly, and that where we do grow, we can be responsible and, and do a good job in providing services in, in whatever area that we're in. We're probably the fourth or fifth largest provider of long-term care facilities in Georgia, at least in the top five at this point in time. Very involved with the state, very involved with the community that we operate in. That kind of gives you a little bit of overview of our footprint in Georgia and in Ohio. We have about two thousand employees. Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's about two thousand, we've probably grown a little bit since then in our twenty-one facilities, including our management company. So we do, we do, we do have a big footprint from an employment standpoint in, in state and some of our communities. One of the unique aspects, I think similar to Iowa, we do operate in Georgia in some very rural locations. Majority of our footprint, from a geography standpoint, is in the central southern part of Georgia, where we, where we have some very small communities that we serve. So a lot of times, we're the largest employer in some of these communities. And, you know, so we, we're, we're very cognizant of the community and, and what we do in, in some of our areas. We have to be very cognizant of that and very engaged with, with the community. We also believe in our, in our operating philosophy, our administrators are really our CEOs. They manage their business. Now, obviously, they need support from the management company, but we really allow them to make autonomous decisions as it relates to what's in the best interest as, as, as the, as the facility operates in each unique state and/or area. But we do have to have that management oversight to help guide them, and, and, and our, our administrators engage us all the time with, what do I need to do, and, and help with support in making some of those decisions. So all of our communities are very unique. We do, you know, we, we don't cookie-cutter our operating style, our management style to any one niche, so it's not just take all Medicare, take all private pay, or, or by payer, or by type of patient. We operate a lot of facilities that are all site, and our behavior. We have behavior units. We do have some facilities that are more on the Medicare short-term side, so we work with each administrator, each community, and what, what meets that niche, and, and, and work in, in making sure that they can excel in services they provide, and, and, and provide great care to our patients in that area. So that's kind of a, a general operating philosophy on, on Beacon. If you look at our structure and support, a lot of our folks, our senior management team in the Tampa office, you really just have Bruce and myself, HR, our accounting services, some back-office pieces. So a lot of our, our support, like, like Vicky Sherard, we have a business development Vice President that helps the facilities and development of census and, and community relation, Kristy Allen. We have, of course, HR, Stephanie De La Rose, who handles our HR aspects of it. We have a plant ops, Keith Bryant, who, who works with the facility administrator and the plant ops personnel in maintaining our properties. And when there's capital needed, or some of those areas, he works closely with the team. So we've got a really good support structure, but most of our folks are out in the field and, and located in different parts of where we operate in. So we really kind of decentralize, if you will. So that gives you kind of a quick overview of our, our leadership experience. All of us are, are various multiple years in, in long-term care, myself included. I'm a nurse by background. I'm originally from Iowa. I grew up in western Iowa, in the town of Anawa. My family actually owned a, a nursing home that my grandfather built and, and operated for, for years before it was sold. So one of the reasons why Bruce was interested in talking to me is I knew the area, I know the geography, I know the, I know a lot of the, the components of Iowa, and it's a good operating state. So that's kind of one of the reasons why we're looking at moving into that, moving into the state. We are also interested in not just one facility, but looking at picking up a group of, of facilities. We are, we are taking a look at some additional homes, so we can provide a good regional support area. So we're definitely interested and invested into taking a look at Iowa, where it makes sense from an operating standpoint. Little bit on Vicky, before I go, let Andy kinda talk about some of the financial and accounting support services. Care and clinical support is our number one at the top of what we do, caring for our patients. Vicky Sherard, who, as I mentioned, is also our Chief Compliance Officer, she's also an elder law attorney. She is just, she works with all of us so closely and really is advocate for our patient care. We do, she does have a group of regional support staff that are out in the field to help support clinical programs, quality assurance, compliance, helping the GONs and the administrators and the MDS folks in our clinical components, with staffing, with day-to-day operations. Very engaged. So we're very, we're very proud to have Vicky as part of our support team. But does an excellent job in developing all of our clinical programs, even for some of our facilities, where she's helped develop a lot of some site programs, behavior programs, some of the things where we have some buildings that we do have locked units from a dementia standpoint. So if there's any questions I can't ask, I would be, Vicky would be more than happy to answer any questions post-call. If we want to email those questions, Ryan or Board, we would be, she would be glad to address any of those, those questions. We really believe, I guess I kind of want to go back to our operating philosophy as well. Our support services are, are, are really our, our Regional Vice Presidents. We, we really, we, we structure Regional Vice Presidents for a group of facilities, and then we do have a Regional Nurse. We have Regional Business Office Support. We do Regional Marketing. We want to make sure that our facilities have the support that's more local and not centralized somewhere in, in some other location they operate, and can really relate and, and assist the facilities in that aspect. And Vicky is, does the same, same thing with her Regional Nurses as well. We have, actually, we have three Regional Nurses, two in Georgia and one in Ohio. Andy, do you want to talk a little bit about Financial and Accounting Support Services?
Sure. Thanks, Shane, and thanks for hosting us today, folks, on, on this call. My name's Andy Borzamato. I'm the CFO for Beacon, and I'm based out of the Tampa office. And a, a lot of what I'm gonna talk about is going to intertwine with some of the things that, that Shane mentioned before on our, on our vision, our philosophies, but, you know, a couple of things that Shane mentioned before that I think are, are kind of run through our entire organization, particularly with me and, and financials is, you know, we believe that, that great care leads to great financials, that if we're, we're taking care of, of our residents in, in the best way possible, that we're gonna have the, the best outcomes for them, and that our financial results are going to be the best. Obviously, being in the, in the accounting and finance departments here, that's, that's, that's my goal on a daily basis is to make sure that all of our records and all of our financial support is given to all of our communities that we serve out there. Beacon Health is, is the home office for the, the twenty-two buildings that Shane mentioned before, six in Ohio, sixteen in Georgia. And, and our, our setup here at the Beacon Office in Tampa is, accounting, accounts payable, and payroll are all managed out of this office, where the details and some of the record-keeping is at each of our local sites. We try to centralize these three primary functions for, for two reasons. One is, is to make sure that we are maintaining compliance with all rules and, and regulations that are out there. But really, the underlying reason why we centralize those three things is so that the, the administrators out there and their staffs have more time to spend tending to the needs of, of the residents. We can take, you know, payroll entering or accounts payable review and approval off of an administrator's plate. It gives that administrator more time to take care of the resident, to make sure that their experience is going as best as possible. The, that, that management model for us works very well, and, you know, used in various parts in, in our company, and, and really maintaining that, that level of, of centralization has helped us out. Our, our accounts payable people deal a lot of times with, with the vendors directly. Again, that's to keep the vendors from, from bogging down the administrator's time. The accounting is all managed here, and we, we communicate and regularly review our financials with our administrators and, and give them a, a set of financials that everything is, is at their fingertips. So that's the, that's kind of the corporate setup here in Tampa, accounting, accounts payable, payroll. Shane is, is based out of here to help with, with reimbursements and acquisitions. A Human Resource Manager, Stephanie, is, is based out of here, and, and Bruce is based out of here. So, but the, what we have to, to assist us on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis is, we, we have a dashboard that, that we maintain where all of our metrics are updated multiple times a day, in terms of residents, clinical outcomes, AR, labor, various items like that. And what it does is it gives the management team in Tampa, as well as our Beacon Support Team out in the field, regular access to data. On this data, they can, they can identify problems quickly, and, and the, the thought behind that is that they can get to a resolution of an issue before it becomes something significant. Our, our Beacon Team is regularly reviewing our dashboard, reviewing our numbers. Every couple hours, numbers update for us, and this way it helps us to be more responsive to issues as we see them. The other thing that Shane talked about before was, you know, today unfortunately, you're just stuck with Shane and, and myself on the call. Vicky would have been a, a great advocate to talk about a lot of her, her clinical issues and, and goals. Bruce is obviously a great advocate, being our owner, but our Beacon Team is very hands-on. We're out in the field regularly. We don't dictate to, to the buildings how they are supposed to do their administrative duties and do, take care of the residents. We are there to support them. Do we have certain programs that we want to, to work with them? Absolutely. And we'll go out there and, and work with the administrator, knowing that not every building is the same. There may be certain needs for one building that are different from another, but we are very cognizant of that, and our Beacon Team is, knows that, and we will regularly go through the states of, of Georgia and Ohio, and hopefully in the future Iowa, and, and stop in on buildings and review what they're doing, make suggestions to them on how to improve their, their reporting, their outcomes. Make sure that they're, they are aware of all the available resources that our Beacon Home Office has. Couple other items that, that I jotted down during, during Shane's opening there, you know, was Beacon's involvement in, in looking at each building and the ability to invest in, in each building. If there is a need, a capital need in a building that we think will improve resident care, we review those items and are always willing to look at improving the, the physical plant that we have at, at our building. We work closely with a number of suppliers in that, that help us purchase items strategically. We're on the cutting edge of using a lot of the equipment that we have out there to, to bring into the facilities we operate in. So, and we are, we are regularly working with, with our team of, of suppliers of equipment. Our Beacon Team is also loaded with specialists. We have specialists that help review our therapy bills, review our pharmacy bills, review our MDSs, review our, our utility bills. We manage these, these properties from a financial point to make sure that we are making the most efficient use of, of our operation out there, because we know if we can save money on certain aspects of the, the operation, that we have more to invest in other aspects of the operation, maybe that need some improvement, or something to be brought more up to date. And again, all with the, the goal of making the experience the best it can be for the resident. Our marketing philosophy, I wish our marketing director was here to, to talk about this, but she is a huge proponent of being a significant part of the community, not only working with, with hospitals and discharge planners and medical directors, but becoming part of all the clubs locally there, and, and being invested in that community, and, and knowing that, that the center that, that we operate in that, we want that center to be the center of choice in that market. And she is, got a lot of creative ways that, that, that we communicate with the field, with the market that we're in. And because obviously, we, we need, we want to take care of residents, and we need residents in there to, to provide great care for them. So, you know, our marketing philosophy is, is very geared to, to becoming a part of the community. Shane mentioned before about the, kind of the hierarchical, hierarchical structure of our organization and how flat it is. And I think that's important, because that helps make decisions, helps us to respond to issues a lot quicker. It doesn't have to go from point A to point B to get approved, and then B to C, and then C to D in terms of people. Usually, it takes one phone call, identify the problem, identify the solution, and then implement it, so that we're not waiting around making bigger issues out of, out of ones that should be small and, and resolved quickly. So a flat hierarchy and, and a, a smart and responsive Beacon Team are definitely ways to, to do that. The, a couple more, just financial specifics, but, but items that really show what, what Beacon's about, the budgets that we do. We do an annual budget every year. We don't dictate that budget from the Tampa office and say, this is, this is gonna be your budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. What we do is, we take a general budget, and we send it out to the administrator and say, this is how you've been operating on the current year. These are some suggestions that we have for you next year, but we want you to build your budget based on what you know about your market, what you know about your census, what you know about your expenses. We, we treat you, the administrator of that center, as the CEO of that center. So if you're running this organization, what is the budget that you want to set for, for the center that, that you're operating on? The Beacon Team supports the entire budget process, every particular department in there. Vicky will weigh in on the clinical, Shane will, will help with some of the, the rates that we have. We have our, our Director of Environmental Services that will help comment on the equipment and strategically look to see what items we may need to purchase in the upcoming fiscal year. So Beacon, again, is there to support. The administrator is there to be the CEO of their, of their building. We go with collaborative budget that at the end of the day, we all agree on, and that gets implemented, and that becomes our, our game plan, game plan for the, for that upcoming budget year. Our, our expenses that we have through the financials, we use a, a purchasing portal called DSSI. It is a, one central spot, spot with about, I guess we're up to fifteen or, or twenty particular approved. It is a one central spot with about, I guess we're up to 15 or 20 particular approved vendors. And the key with DSSI in that purchasing portal. So, each member, that formulary is regularly reviewed to us to make sure that we are getting the right items for our residents, whether they're clinical, whether they're housekeeping, dietary. The food menus are managed through that formulary as well. And we think it gives us control and help and direction to administrators there so that we all know we're working off of the same list of items for them to order. The administrator is going to be strategic in how he or she manages the department heads in the building and how they help manage their individual areas for the residents there. So, the formulary for us is regularly reviewed. We review items, not only clinical items, medical supplies and oxygen and disposable briefs, but we'll also include on there capital items. And, but this way, we know and we're approved of all those items that are on that formulary. And that helps for us to maintain a consistent purchasing program in the company. Couple other items I had for you guys. You know, I talked before about the dashboard. And I think the dashboard is really emblematic of, you know, the care and effort that we put into assisting and managing these facilities. The dashboard is maintained for us with inputs from our billing software, our labor and staffing software and from, and updates a number of times per day. But the best thing about that is, you know, most of us that are here in the Tampa office, most of the Beacon people out there and most of the administrators, the first thing that they do in the morning when they log in before their morning meetings with their staffs is they pull up this dashboard and they see where they are census-wise. They see where they are with their labor from the previous day or the previous three days. They see what their, how their cash collections are going. They see what their monthly spend is on food so far. It's kind of a one-stop shop to give everybody an idea of how their month is going, how their week is going, how the day is going so far. And it gives them a chance to course correct if something is going the wrong way according to budget or someone wants to make adjustments to the way that they're allocating their LPNs or their RMs and their staffing. So, it's a very dynamic piece of software. And we make sure that our administrators are using this on a regular basis because the Beacon team is using that to help identify areas of concern. If the administrator is focused on taking care of the residents all the time, maybe they're not aware of some of the data that's going on behind the scenes. So, we don't want to be surprised that at month end, when we go through our financial statements and said, "Oh, we missed that one" or "We weren't aware of that expense was trending this way." This way, everybody is aware of the items and issues at hand as they come up and helps us to be very dynamic and quickly responding to these issues. So, I've worked in healthcare for about nine years. The software that we use here at Beacon is great, gives a lot of information. It's very easy to use. I enjoy doing the accounting work with a group of people. Bruce and I have worked together for those nine years. And I can honestly say, it's a little different working for an owner that's also CPA. So, he's very in tune to the numbers. But when we review our financials at month end, the numbers tell a story. They, we try to make sure that those stories that it's telling are going to be a good one. It's usually great care leads to great financials. And usually, there's a real good correlation between that. We have a building that's got good financial results. Most of the time, the clinical outcomes are great. It's a solid staff that we have there. And our goal is to make sure that the buildings that are struggling get the support they need to get back on their feet and keep the care to their residents to the best that they can. So, I wish I could comment more on a little bit some of the other things in Beacon, but I'm kind of limited to the finances and the numbers here. So, that's kind of my situation here. So, I'll throw it back to Ryan and Shane or throw it open to any questions that you folks have out there.
Couple of things that I just want to add, Andy. Thank you for the overview as well. We do work very closely together, you know, because we are a pretty small team. Couple of things that I did want to add on, our IT support services for the building are really key. We do use a EMR software for MDS. We are moving towards a full EMR type of process with a company called Point Click Care. We have a, we use a company called PCT that helps with our technology services with the buildings, our those areas. We actually use another software that we put in all of our facility called TSI, which helps facilities with their quality reporting, what we're reporting out there to the state and federal government as it relates to MDS data, quality reporting data, any of those kind of areas. So, we feel that's really important, not only from, you know, reporting, knowing what we're, but from a compliance standpoint and what we're providing and how we're providing it. So, we do vet very heavily on the IT side as it relates to what we do. With that said, I guess Ryan and board, we can open that up to questions or any other that you may have for us.
So, Shane, can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's Mark Myers. Can you explain to the county, you know, we've talked about this a little bit with you and the folks here, can you explain sort of what your baseline criteria are for establishing a portfolio in Iowa? For example, if you're three weeks away from closing this transaction and some of the other things you thought you were going to buy or you want to buy aren't quite ready yet, what does that going to mean for the county? Are you going to ask them to postpone the transaction here to close those other transactions? Or are you going to be on the other transactions where you'll know or confident go through that you'll go ahead and close on this one? If those other things close first, then obviously, it's not as much of an issue. But if this one's scheduled to close first, which it probably is because you're out in front of this one a little bit more, can you describe that a little bit better? Because they're going to have to make a decision now as to which bidder to go with with these open-ended situations for you.
Sure, sure. As we stated, from LOI, usually for us, closings generally 90 to 120 days. So, we do, we're not a company that quickly moves on a transaction. We want to make sure it's going to be the right transaction. We do a careful due diligence in that transaction. It's all dependent upon a lot of our communication. There is going to have to be some additional tours that will have to happen. So, we're not a fast-moving, you know, it's generally 90 to 120 days. And I don't know if Andy, if there's anything you want to add to that as it relates to? I mean, we do want to look at additional locations in Iowa, just for the fact that we want to make sure that when we do operate a group of facilities, that we could put in that support services, that's our philosophy in place. So, do I think it's going to hold back us actually closing on that? I do think there are the opportunities there, where I don't think that would be the case. Andy, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I think with us, it's important for us to do the due diligence to make sure that we can fit this, any location into our model that we do. We know what our Beacon support team is able to do. We are confident that we have our IT systems in place. But we also don't want to rush through a, an acquisition or change an operator until we've got all that stuff lined up. Because if we don't do those things and we try to rush through this, we're going to miss a lot of the key components and then we're not going to really have the Beacon experience that we have in an operation. So, you know, a lot of it is fitting it into our operational model. And then, you know, provided that that works, which I think in our preliminary tests, it is and on our knowledge of the buildings, I think it's going to be something that we can move on quickly. Again, we have a lot of things in place that will help that process. But, you know, we're not going to just rush through something just to make sure that we get it done at a particular time. We want to make sure that it's the right fit because ultimately, the care of the residents is the most important thing for us.
And I think support of our staff that come along and as we take a look at the operation as a whole, Mark and Board, we want to make sure that we're going to be able to fit into that mold. We, just to get some idea from a transaction standpoint, in the past 12 months, I think we've closed, Andy, correct on my wrong, three nursing homes. And we've actually are looking at another one here very shortly. So, we are going through transactions, acquisitions as we speak in some of our other locations. So, we do, we do take it through the process. You know, I think that's kind of the best way I can answer that at this point in time.
And the Beacon team is very experienced in doing this. We've got our list of, you know, going from very general to very specific in terms of every part of the operation that needs to be addressed for us to assume control of an operation. So, many of these factors, these potential hurdles, we can probably get through a little faster. But again, it's, you know, we have to get the entire scope of the project in front of us before we can start pinning down some times.
So, another question for you, it's Mark again. Have you purchased an asset or purchased a group of assets in the past that were losing the kind of money that this facility's in? If you have, how have you addressed the losses, the specific increases in revenue, decreases in expenses, staffing, et cetera? And have you typically leased those facilities initially and then purchased them later once you've stabilized the operations? Or have you purchased them and if so, kind of what was your capital stack structure and your operating structure?
I think we've done a little bit of all of those items. We have spent a pretty good part of our history on assuming operations at troubled facilities. Maybe they fit into our portfolio geographically. But in many cases, we think we have the right team in place to help turn around the various aspects of those operations. I think in terms of some of the specific items that we have in terms of capital, we'd almost have to address those things on a, you know, on a very specific basis. I mean, I think we're kind of general on that right now. But I think, you know, we have no problem moving into facilities that are troubled financially. And we can pretty much lay out quickly, you know, a path back to profitability quickly as long as we can get a chance to go through, identify some numbers, identify some areas, whether they be significant or even minor, to fix, tweak and adjust. And then take control of that and start the process to turn it around.
So, what are your plans for the facility initially, like in the transition, with the employees, the residents, the quality mix, vet mix, patient mix? And then long-term, what do you envision and how are you going to get from here to there?
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry. I can answer that. Obviously, when we take a look at an acquisition of a facility, our due diligence will, as Andy had mentioned, will guide us on a lot of insight on the short-term operation, what we have to make changes. As far as staff goes, you know, generally, we're going to take a look at where we need to keep staff, as far as how we're staffed. We evaluate that as a whole. We work both with the facility management team, the current management teams that are in place. We evaluate those needs. We take a look at inefficiencies. And if we do have to make some changes, we do make those changes. You know, we want to make sure that we're staffing our, especially our nursing and our care services accordingly. You know, we want to take a look at the state requirements as well as the care requirements. Every facility is going to be different. You just can't staff to a state minimum or you just can't staff to a minimum. Every facility is a little unique, as Andy mentioned, in our budget process and what we do. So, as we get into that first 12 to 24 months, we really don't change a whole lot. You know, we definitely have to make some changes. I don't think it's any big secret here, as you're taking a look at the numbers of Country View, that there's going to have to be some changes made. But we're carefully to evaluate that. And sometimes those changes are a little bit slower. Sometimes it's moving around. Sometimes it's just some efficiencies with, some of the things we had talked about can resolve a lot of those areas. As far as admission process or admissions or changing admissions, I think Country View has a niche. I think they serve a community well. We're not going to change that. I personally did the tour with the management team a couple of weeks ago in Iowa. And I went to, got a beautiful facility. They did a great job giving me a really solid tour of the units, of the facility itself. They were very proud of their facility. And definitely, we take that in consideration. We're not going to change the mix or we're not going to say, "We're going to close this unit down and just go into this avenue of business." Now, long-term wise, we probably look at additional, where we can provide some additional services. I think there's room for some additional skilled services that could come in, expanding therapy services in the building that's going to only help support even the current residents. So, I think we can even bring some add-ons to help support the community needs there and the residents that reside there. We're not, you know, as far as the current residents will stay there as long as we can provide care and services that they meet the requirements for the facility. There's really going to be no changes in that aspect. You know, we want to make sure, obviously, we have to take a look at our admitting process, you know, making sure that we are billing accordingly, billing accurately. And all that, we take a look at as we acquire. For a whole, we're really not changing what the facility is doing. But down the road, we would take a look and evaluate where we could add-on, help improve outcomes, help improve, opening it up to maybe some additional services on top of what they're currently doing.
And I think Beacon is a very responsive operator of a facility. As Shane said, we're not going to staff to the bare minimums of the state because that's going to result in substandard resident care. And we're not going to overstaff because that's going to prevent us from profits to reinvest in the building. We're going to find and tweak the staffing that we have there to make sure that it is a fit for that particular operation there. We've gone into buildings in really rough shape and turned them around fast. We've taken over buildings that needed some minor tweaking and have turned those buildings around as well. So, again, it's not a one-size-fits-all. But, you know, again, the ultimate goal is to make sure that the care of residents, that we have a good group of people that are supporting those residents, that there is proper leadership in the building, that that leadership is supported by a home office that helps take a lot of the administrative functions off their hands so that that leadership can take care of the residents and make sure that the outcomes and the experience for those residents is the best.
Okay, and sort of a semi-related question. Have you purchased facilities that were unionized and were then non-union facilities after the? How did you handle the employee, the labor force, employee benefits, retirement plans, PTO and all that kind of stuff?
I can take this, Andy, if you want me to.
Okay.
We've had three, we had three facilities with unions when we took over operations of that. And then, we've also successfully voted out unions in facilities where, you know, they find out that, you know, benefits are good and like the company and the unions. You know, we successfully utilized both. We do have union facilities. You know, we try to be responsive to union as far as the negotiations, working with them, supporting, resorting the staff. I mean, we feel like we, you know, we offer our employees, I think, a very fair compensation package, if you will, based on obviously, items of service. And we evaluate all of these really individually. But we do offer our employees a great, you know, a benefit plan that's, a group plan, if you will, that we all can participate in from medical insurance to 401K to Vision and Dental and all the different, we have some different packages that we can offer employees that we feel are pretty good. And that helps support, I think, some of what we do. We don't really run We don't really run into a lot of union issues with that, but we have successfully worked with unions. We've successfully moved facilities out of the union where it didn't make sense, or where they did not want to be in the union any further. So, it's something that we do have experience with. Our VP and Director does a lot of, works with the union. If she was on the call, she'd probably answer a little bit more specific on that, but we do have experience with that. I don't know if, Andy, there's anything else you want to add to that?
No, I was going to say, I think Stephanie is currently, the reason she couldn't be on this call is she was meeting with some of the union reps up in Ohio where she was.
Yeah.
So, that's why she couldn't be on this call. And again, with her, it's open communication, and on our side, it's primarily Stephanie's responsibility, and then she reviews all of the communication with Bruce, and then we try and work with the union on whatever the backdoor comes for the operation.
Okay, and then, how would you handle the current vendors at the community?
Okay. Go ahead, Andy.
I was going to say, I mean, I think we would evaluate all of those vendors and see if they provide the service that's the best product for our residents and that is the, you know, the best cost for us. If it's a good situation, we have, we work with national vendors through our Georgia and Ohio facilities, but we also work with a lot of local vendors. They provide a better service. We leave a lot of that to the administrator, will help advise them. We can work a national contract into the operation. If the cost savings and the product work in our favor, that will be something that we will suggest. But in many cases, you know, and particularly in, you know, in our rural communities that we have, in a lot of cases, the local vendor is the best option. You have the best service, you have the best price, and we see that running through our operations most of the time. Our food vendor is typically a national one, and I think most operators will have that. We have, currently have US Foods, but in most of our locations, there's a local dairy person that supports them, and there's a local baker that supports each of our operators. So, I think it's on an as-needed basis, there'll be some things that, with food, with some of our medical supplies that we'll keep with our national contract and a lot of other items that we will definitely consider, the existing vendor or the local vendor in those situations.
Okay, and sort of a large set of questions here, but I think they're all generally related. Where are you at in your diligence process? How long do you contemplate it taking to complete that process? What are the steps between here and closing for you? Is there anything you see? You talked a little bit about wanting to build a portfolio, you know, that aside for the moment, because you already addressed that, but, you know, talk about maybe the requisite equity and debt that you have to procure, how are you going to come up with that? If it's already there, just let us know that. You know, track records for closing transactions, do you always close what you put under LOI at the price you said? Kind of describe to us in the dinner.
Andy, do you want to start with that, or?
Sure. I think I can only speak, I'm not going to speak on the debt side right now, but I mean, the operations, we're willing, we are able to work very quickly through something. Where we are in the process is we have reviewed certain financial data, and we're on this call because the data that we've reviewed on our first and second run-throughs of the data seems like that it makes sense for us to consider this option. So, you know, with us and a full blast from the Beacon team, the operations transfer on this can move quickly. I can't, Bruce would be the one to comment on the equity and the bigger dollars on it, but from an operational perspective, what Beacon has typically done in these situations is have two or three people deputized as the project managers, and then making sure that they coordinate their communications with the rest of the Beacon team to go through our checklist. I apologize, I don't know what the specific timing is on this. We've kind of been working through the numbers, so maybe Shane, I don't know if you have some idea for that and the timing that you can talk about.
And I think Bruce wanted to make sure that we understood it, you know, that 90 to 120-day timeframe from the initial LOI. You know, things can go a lot faster as well as we start working with, as we can start working with the, getting some additional information in the data room. I know there is, we do have some information, but we're probably going to require some additional information. So, it's how expeditiously we can work together to get that, to review it. I can answer a little bit on as far as our equity lenders and so forth. Bruce has an extensive relationship with several lenders, REITs and equity groups, you know, and he has also made his equity groups that are interested in this transaction. They are, they've expressed a desire to be part of this deal, so they really leave it up to him to start that process, to get it going, initially take a look at it, and so Bruce can, just with his, just with his background in acquisition, you know, he can get it done very quickly. And like I said earlier, we are actually in the process of actually acquiring some additional facilities on the ownership side as well. So, we have no problems as far as the equity or the lending portion of it, so that really will not be an obstacle at all.
Okay, and then, backing up a little bit, the, when we looked at your, you know, the facilities that you have now, some of them have real high star ratings, some of them had lower ratings, some of them had higher staffing, some lower.
Yep.
Can you describe kind of what your plans are for some of the facilities? Some of them maybe you just took over. Can you describe what's going on there a little bit?
Sure, absolutely. As I mentioned earlier, a lot of our facilities are in very rural areas, and there are, there are lots of staffing challenges as it relates to, in a lot of these areas. So, getting to some of those levels from an RN standpoint probably hurts us some of the, on the worst part of it. We really focus on our quality measures because we really feel that tells a better story on what's actually going on in a facility. And if you look at our quality measures, the quality measure portion of the five-star, we have several facilities that are hitting five-star right now. I think our average stars are between 3.5 and, about three and a half stars from a quality measure standpoint across the entire portfolio. We put a, we have a process, Vicky has a focused component of looking at the five-star piece of it. And obviously, with, we have a very good track record on health inspections, and remember, being such a new company and a young company, you kind of live with the past when it comes to quality, five-star quality measures. Five-star quality measures, some of these are a year older, a year old staffing with PBJ reporting. There's a lot of, there's a lot of lag time, and there's still some challenges with five-star right now for any provider out there. So, we are, we're always looking at improving in our five-star program and our quality reporting, and that's why we invest heavily into, as I've mentioned, the TSI program and point, because it gives them the tools. And we, so when we go out and we talk to the community, or we talk to the hospitals, we really want to showcase for them, hey, this is, these are our programs. This is what we're doing. This is how we're taking care of our patients, and this is where we're going, because we can measure those in real time. And as time goes by, six months, you see an improvement, you know, in the five-star overall. And we are actually improving quarter over quarter. We've seen some great improvements in five-stars. I don't have all the details in front of me, but it is, I work closely actually with Vicky Sherard. I do a lot of analytical and also some education for our folks out in the field regarding, you know, how do you, how do you move the stars? What do you focus on? Collaboration. We really involve our therapy provider, which I kind of manage for the company to get engaged. So, for us, it's really showcasing our quality of care, because some of the other aspects are really difficult to move over time, or they take a long time to move. And there are still some glitches in the system as you, with the five-star, that CMS is still working out, but, you know, that's the thing that we really focus. So, if we have a lower star, if it's RN staffing, it's bringing them down, you know, we really focus on the quality measure side because that's really showing the care. We do staff, you know, it's, we're always looking to enhance our staffing in our buildings, but there are challenges here and there. I mean, I want to be totally transparent in some very rural areas, and in some of our very rural areas in Georgia, and I know Iowa well, is even more rural than Iowa. So, we have to really work very hard to work with communities, and we've been very successful with it. I mean, we, like I said, we become employer of choice, you know, we, I think we have. We offer our staff a great experience and work experience and quality of care, and it shows. So, we're moving those stars, but like I said, I think the focus really for us is the Q ends.
Are there any other questions that you want to ask?
I had a couple, I want to go back to.
Maybe interest who you are.
Yes. This is County Supervisor Chris Schwartz. I want to go back to your employee benefits packages. One question I know that some employees were concerned, were wondering about is, many of them have been there for a number of years, and they're wondering if there's any consideration given to some of these longevity benefits such as accrued vacation time and how you would handle that transition. Then my next question is just more specifics on your health insurance plans. So, what are your average premiums and deductibles and max out-of-pockets? Because I think that can vary quite a bit. So, just like to have a couple more specifics on those.
I wish I could get specific on the insurance side of it. I just, I don't know. It's, you know, we're undergoing a, our health insurance re-enrollment right now, and we have, our provider is one that's here in the southeast. So, we'd have to obviously engage with someone out there and do some quick negotiations, but we do have a partner that helps us with that, that I'm sure would be more than willing to engage. In regards to PTO and employee benefits, that all happens on the operations transfer. Those are negotiations usually between our side and the other side in terms of how much is assumed, how much is paid for, how much is paid out. We have, you know, I've seen varying ways that we do it, where people were able to keep 50%, or there's a payout of portion of it, payout of all of it. It's really up to the operations transfer agreement that's going to get worked through.
This is Supervisor Schwartz again, just one more question. Do you have a history of any of your facilities that have specific mental health units?
Not, I can answer that, Andy. Specific, and I, correctly, I think as far as specific behavior units, where we do focus a lot of, where we do have communities where they have a big behavior need, you know, obviously where we would still admit under the criteria, but we don't have any like specialized units such as Country View does where there's a different, there's a different operating process when it comes to those real specialty units. But it's nothing that, as far as that piece of it, you know, obviously with that experience, we would definitely rely on the current management group or managers that are in place. You know, Vicky would be very engaged with them and making sure that program is maintained and flourishes, you know, and so I, we don't have anything to answer you specifically similar to Country View as it relates to that specialty unit.
And this is Chris, again, one final question. You talked, I know, I understand the transition period when dealing with tags and star ratings, but to say for example, a facility that you've had for like a year, what kind of tags have those facilities had in their inspections?
Did you say tags?
Tags, or I don't know what they call them in Georgia or Ohio, but.
Okay, I mean, we've had, you know, we've had nothing significant within the last couple of years that I can recall on a couple, on our homes. I mean, Shane, do you have anything on those guys? Usually on those things?
Yeah, that would be more of a Vicky question, but I can tell you our regulatory outcomes, if you will, or our tag outcomes, if that's kind of what you're referring to from annual surveys or complaint surveys, follow-ups. We have a very good success rate with that. As far as the amount of tag average, it varies by state. Every state has a unique regulatory unit, if you will. Some are a little bit more challenging than others, but Vicky does an incredible job in supporting facilities as it relates to survey process, and it all boils down to providing good quality care. We have a good, you know, Vicky could probably provide us or the board with some regulatory, I know she can, with some specifics from a regulatory standpoint, with public information, but we do, we do a good job with that as far as getting back in there, supporting the facilities. Average tag-wise, I couldn't answer that, but, you know, we, as a team, we talk every week about survey in, what's going on, and then, you know, really making sure that we follow up. And we have a good relationship with our, with the regulators in each state. I think that's very important. Vicky has a good relationship with them. Bruce engages the state agencies, you know, to make sure that we are, we're up to speed, doing the right things, any areas of focus as it relates to the regulations, both for care and plant. So, that's really kind of how we manage that.
And I think what Vicky and her group does that's really beneficial is they conduct mock surveys at facilities. I believe there's one held every month at a different facility where a lot of the Beacon leadership that's in Georgia and that's in Ohio will go to that building and get that, prepare that building for survey when they come in, and they do a complete review of all processes, all paperwork, all files, so that building is properly prepared for survey. The other thing I would say is for some of the acquired properties that Beacon in its history has taken over some troubled facilities, you know, the first, one of the first things that we do is we go in there and we get these guys up to speed with policies, procedures, to make sure that we are survey-ready as quickly as possible, because we know that a lot of these centers have issues. We'll go in there right away, identify three or four key items, and then our Beacon team that travels there will go and address and fix those issues as quickly as possible. And I think back to the mock survey issue, or mock survey process that we have has prepared us so that we haven't had any significant survey issues that I can remember in the near past.
I think one of the, one of, this is Shane, one of the pieces that Vicky puts into there is a good quality assurance program in each facility, that facilities will be reviewing, having a quality assurance meeting to talk about areas of concern if they have, you know, things do happen operationally in any facility. So, they have a method of bringing those to light, talking about them, doing a SWOT analysis on those, on what the problem is and determining some ways to correct that and prevent that from happening if there is an issue that arises. So, we really support the quality assurance process in each building, and then it's kind of rolled up as we take a look at their quality process, you know, and Vicky takes a look at that with the regional nurses and administrators and our regional vice president, you know, on a weekly and monthly basis.
Hi, this is Frank Magman, County Supervisor. We go back to the employee health insurance. Is there a waiting time period? And if you don't have the answer to that, can you get back to the, is there a waiting time period for the current employees to go on health insurance?
We will definitely get back to you on that.
Yeah.
I don't have the, I don't think Shane or I have the answer on that.
Thank you.
This is Linda Layland, County Supervisor, and my question is really regarding the people with disabilities being integrated into their communities, into our community. into our community, and what's your philosophy or practice with helping them have a better quality of life and more independent?
I think, this is Shane, I can answer that, Andy. I think, you know, we want to continue that. I think that's a great program that they have there. I did, I was thoroughly, like I said, I thoroughly enjoyed the visit, taking a look at that program. And we definitely will continue that, that community integration program for those, and make sure that we do leave that open. Because I do think it's a very viable and very good program for the facility and something that, you know, we definitely want to continue to look at and prove upon where we can, or provide additional support services where we can. So I was very impressed with that. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. I did have another question. When you talked about your due diligence period, that 90 to 120 days to close and being very careful in doing that due diligence. You mentioned evaluating us as well and looking at how we fit into your operational model and continuing, obviously, if we do. What are the types of things, I guess, that you have identified with other companies or could with us that would show that you don't, that we don't fit your model?
I would say things like staffing and food and looking at outpatient days on spends. Things that work, you know, that somebody like a Vicky, who's our VP of Clinical, is if she is comfortable with staffing a particular resident population with a allocation of RNs, LPNs, and CNAs, and she thinks that that is going to provide the best outcome for those residents, then that's going to be the model that she's going to go. She'll evaluate, obviously, the layout of the building, the quality of the nursing staff that we have there. And if that's the best for the nurses, that's the model that she's going to recommend. We compare that to see if that would fit in with the building. Obviously, reviewing our food procurement, our therapy, our pharmacy, making sure that we'll be able to provide the proper items we need for resident care. That is another way that we fit into our model. And also to look at the overall staffing of the building. Are there positions that are overstaffed? Are there positions that are understaffed? We place a lot of value in empowering our department heads. We have the right department heads in there. The department need a director and a staff. The activities department require two people or three people or one person enough. We'll evaluate each of those departments and see if that fits in with the model and see if that fits in with what we see when we do our review of the building.
Do you have an average size for your facilities, or is there an average size? Or do you have a, of the 22 that you mentioned?
We are, we operate buildings with 50 residents, and we have buildings that are up to 120, 115. So I'd say probably our sweet spot is probably somewhere in between, but we have success managing at all levels. We probably took our top three performers. There's one that's closest to 50, there's another one that's about 80, and there's another one that's about 115. Those are, each of our top three are different sizes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got one. This is Eric Johnson. I'm the outside counsel representing the board on this possible sale. And as you're aware, you're one of two bidders at this point in time. One of the factors that the board would consider should they choose to move forward is price. The other bidder has offered a price of 5.6 with some standard prorations that would happen. Your offer is 5.5 with those prorations, but also a possible deduction for a property condition assessment, and that's a certain open-ended factor to put in there. At what point in time will you know what that is and how that will affect your price? Because as I said before, the board will have to choose between two, and that will certainly be a factor that they'll consider.
You know, Eric, I don't know if I can answer that right now. I think that's something we'd have to discuss with Bruce. Andy, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that. I mean, I think it's something we'll definitely discuss. But I think that that was in, that's in the original LOI that we put in place. It's definitely open for discussion, but I just don't think we can answer that right now.
Yeah, I can answer that for you.
Any other questions?
This is Frank Maggman again, the board. When you talked about additional services, would those possibly include private pay?
As far as private pay admissions, private pay folks that like to come to the facility, yeah. I mean, if I'm getting that right, is that what you're asking? As far as admitting folks that are private pay versus other payers?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, we do, we do, a lot of our facility, in any of our facilities, we do accept private pay patients if they want to come to the facility, and that's their payer source. That doesn't, that doesn't stop, you know, us from admitting anybody, or it's not any kind of criteria. We look at any payer that, any patient that qualifies for the facility, that meets the services, needs the services, and has a payer that is, that will take care of those services, absolutely. We don't discriminate on payer source or anything like that.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the county?
I don't. Andy, do you?
No, I don't. I know Shane, you've been out there and have visited the property, so, but I unfortunately have not. But I know in our original run-through of the financials, that, you know, we saw a lot of opportunities, I think, to provide a real nice operation for the building.
This is Supervisor White. I got one other question for you then. You just opened it up when you said that about tours. Who's all toured it from your organization so far besides Shane? And how many more tours?
Just me. Just Shane, just myself.
Just you? Okay. How many more people do you think you need to have to go through, Shane?
Well, I think, you know, obviously Bruce will want to take a look at the property himself, so he'll definitely go up there with probably one of the equity folks and probably Vicky Sherard, who is our clinical VP. And I'm sure he's going to ask Andy to go along as well. So that's, we'll probably do a joint type of one other additional tour. I don't think it's going to take any more than that generally to take a look at that unless there's other concerning physical plant issues, which I was not able to assess based on my expertise. Keith Bryant, our physical plant ops person, will probably be included in that. So it may be additional group that'll go up there and spend a day reviewing the property and so forth. You know, that would be the make sense next steps on that.
And we'll communicate that to Bruce. As we said, Bruce is out in the field today doing some work with our other folks, and we'll circle back with him and check on the immediacy of his next steps.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to thank, this is Shane, I just want to thank the board and the public for the opportunity to share in our company. I think we definitely are very interested in Country View. Like I said, I toured the facility. I've been in the long-term care arena for 20-plus years now, and that's where my heart is. So I'm very impressed with the property and with the managers that I toured with. So, you know, we will move forward as expeditiously we can and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. I just appreciate your time today, Shane, Andy, and look forward to meeting possibly those new teams.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Absolutely.
What's our next one?
About in about four minutes.
As soon as he can, Dan. Oh, Dan's here, okay.
Probably should take at least 10 minutes or recess. I didn't mean to jump.
Dog back up at 10 after.
Welcome, Dan. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell them of your adventures coming here?
What were your adventures? Cancelled plane, delayed flight, three-hour drive. Very committed.
We're re-cancel that.
Great.
As I'm driving into here, I get a American cancellation. And as I walk from Terminal 2 to Terminal 1, I'm booking another flight to Cedar Rapids going to Des Moines in a two-hour drive. So it was a good adventure.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you for your interest and your offer. And explain a little bit about who you are personally and who your partner is and kind of your organization, kind of how you guys are laid out. I know you explained it in the offer a little bit, but just to say goodbye.
So I'm one of the partners of the company. And we started that company, it had phases and evolutions. Initially, we were just investors in senior care nursing homes, assisted living. We just put in capital, owned the real estate, and worked with third-party operators, leased it out. That's the company began. And we realized that this business to be very successful from a resident perspective, a business perspective, it very much involves being hands-on operation. So after we stopped buildings, then we started our management company and began operating ourselves as well. And that started about seven years ago. So over time, we evolved through our team to various regions, different states. So currently, we're operating in Wisconsin, Minnesota, Indiana, Ohio, and Texas. So our closest facility is Rochester, Minnesota, it's about a half hour drive from here. And the philosophy overall we have for our company is that we, being in the business from the beginning, we're saying, because we see what works very well and what sometimes doesn't work so well. What doesn't work is being an absentee landlord or operator, where, you know, there's a large number of facilities and people sometimes go there, and that is a very challenging way to operate. And that's why if you look at the space law companies that are larger, they're breaking up. It's a very hands-on business. And so our operational focus is being very, very hands-on. So every single region that I mentioned, we have a regional team, and they're there every single week. So the local regional team, the clinical team, the business development team, they're in the facilities, every single facility, every single week to ensure that all the support from operational standpoint, clinical standpoint, managerial standpoint is provided to the local facilities, and that's really what we find drives success. And so it's a very, very hands-on approach where from corporate, provide all the back office type of functionality, the streamlining of vendor relations and things that aren't really part of the clinical operations. But from a perspective of being the facility, finding the management perspective and the key success with their hands-on, physically on the ground, boots on the ground every single week in all facilities. And we find that's what is able to provide a success we've had. And the way we put on a portfolio, every single asset they ignore, now we have 12 of them, every single one except one is losing a tremendous amount of money day one. And we're happy to say every single one of them today is making money. And part of that, we feel, is very much the approach of being, investing in the business, capital, investing human resources. And that's what allows us to play something that's challenging, some clinically, financially, really roll up our sleeves, be there boots on the ground, and invest the time and energy we want to ensure success happens.
And there's really two, some of these questions are going to lead to other questions.
Sure, of course.
So as you know, as three of us, at least, and anybody else in the room who's in the business, there's kind of two philosophies. One's sort of a raise the revenue model, one's a cut the expenses model. It sounds like you're focused on the revenue side. Can you describe a little bit more like what you guys have done to facilities losing money?
Sure.
There's probably no typical, but what are some of the things you've done to address, you know, that?
Sure. So we look at this through that pretty much. A lot of things we find is we have one of our core competencies, I would say, is that being able to find efficiencies of cost-cutting, but not necessarily with vendors. We have a very strong contractual relationships with two people, office attorneys, and they've been able to develop strong contracts with various vendors that provide the same type of services as smaller companies do, but are much better economies of scale. If you want to have 12 facilities and with very good contractual relationships in place, we can keep the exact same services in place, but reduce the price via having better relationships with the vendors. The question is local vendors. We very much enjoy working local vendors. As long as the price of the service is the same to the residents, that's something we're very involved in. From a revenue perspective, we find that things are done. So for example, in Minnesota, it's a semi-state, it's a matter of getting the right type of residents in order to maximize reimbursement. So that's one of the things we focus on. So of course, we like to have, you know, Medicare Part A residents, that's nice to have. But majority of our facilities, that's not the focus. It's rather taking the Medicaid residents that the community needs a place to, for them to go, and finding the right operational model to make sure that they can be the servicing provider for them, but also make their long-term sustaining.
Do you have a presentation that you were going to show?
I wasn't planning on that.
It's fine, it's fine.
Everything's on our website, we can.
We just didn't want to make sure we were cutting off. If you had this big presentation.
Patients are boring, she was just trying.
So you have 12 facilities now. And remind us again, how many are in Wisconsin versus, oh, Ohio, Indiana, and Texas? What's the rate?
Sure. So there's four skilled nursing facilities in Wisconsin, in Minnesota. One of them, we just closed in March. In Wisconsin, there are three facilities in August that we were before. One of ours is closing out a little there. In Texas, there's one, part of our legacy model, releasing out. In Ohio, there's one operating, sorry, Indiana, there's one operating. In Ohio, there's two, one of which is closed last week.
What's the average size?
As far as beds, average, about 110, 115. And we have two different arms, we have skilled nursing arm, we have assisted living arm. The assisted living arm is larger, where we just closed about 200 units facility. One exclusive, also 200 units, but it's the same safety.
Can you just clarify, by closed, you shut the facility down?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Or you purchased?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Closed, we closed the transaction. We purchased the facility, and it's very, very open and functional. In fact, in that one, we have $2.2 million that we're investing in the building. That's already part of the acquisition, the laundry.
Okay.
And the same thing in Rochester, we just invested $600,000 in the building to renovations and adding more functional for residents.
So maybe get a little more granular with us on, in terms of what you've done, like some examples of staffing changes, vendor changes and so forth, revenue enhancement, Q mix, quality mix and so forth with facilities you purchased in the past skilled nurses. And then probably more importantly, or as importantly, what you plan to do with this facility. Maybe, and this covers a whole host of questions that were listed in the question list we sent you. So take your time, do it however you want. Sort of describe where you're at now, like what's going to be, what's going to be your approach to this specific facility as far as management, as far as vendor contracts, employees, employee benefits, moving from union to non-union, whatever it is, employees, patients, the community. Kind of give us a picture of what that's going to look like for us and how you've done that in the past. Maybe a couple of examples.
Sure. I mean, so overall, our philosophy is that things that work as far as the right management staff, the right vendor relationships, the right staffing patterns, is keep those and really figure out what things are not working. And if it's not working, figure out why and fix it. And every single scenario is that. For instance, in Minnesota, I'm sorry, in Wisconsin, we've moved through facilities seven, eight months ago at this point. There, the challenge was that the vendor... There, the challenge was that the vendor contracts were exceptionally high. So no change to any of the residents or the staff. We lower the cost by negotiating therapy contracts, negotiating pharmacy contracts, et cetera. And also it wasn't, the systems were not put in place to maximize reimbursement from the current residents that were there. And that in itself, being there eight months, they were very challenged facilities. All of those are losing money. They're all cash flow positive today. So there was no structural change beyond being able to renegotiate contracts and be more hands on as an approach. Because the previous owners there, very good owners, but they have a large portfolio and they weren't hands on focusing on those facilities. And as far as the benefits, I think you mentioned, and other.
Let me just, before you go on, explain what I believe Dan's talking about as far as, for those who are not as familiar with skilled nursing reimbursement. Correct me if I'm wrong, what he's talking about is, you know, Susie Smith is receiving care from the facility, but the facility's not documenting it properly. They don't have point click care, one of these programs, or they're not using the program properly. And so the state would be glad to pay for those services, but they're not even billing them to the state properly. So first thing is to get paid for what you are doing. Otherwise, you're, it's a double sword. You're providing services and they're costing you staffing and you're not getting paid for it.
Correct.
So fixing that.
But in my understanding, in Iowa, there's a similar reimbursement system. Where based on the levels of services that provides residents, there's an associate reimbursement. And what we see very similar in this facility to the Wisconsin facilities, a lot of the services currently being rendered are not properly captured. Therefore poured to the state and to not being reimbursed at the levels that they should. So those are kind of the voting fruit that can be implemented day one to have a pretty material impact. As far as wages and benefits, our philosophy is to keep wages as they are. One of the most important things we find, who runs the facility, is the staff. So you want to have a stable, dedicated staff that believes in the vision. Wants to have a sustainable, long-term business that can provide care for residents. That's ultimately what the facility's doing. And as much as we're there every single week, we're not there every single day. So therefore, we believe that coming in to identify who are the key staff that are successful, who are dedicated to the long-term vision and have them in place, keep the same type of wages in place. Benefits, obviously, it's a, where it's not a sustainable model the way it currently is. But we do a strong benefit package that consists of each of all people. Another type of standard market benefit packages that will provide our employees. As far as the approach, I'll give you an example. In Minnesota, there was a resident, one of our employees, who had a fortunate health situation. And they went to the hospital and they received a very, very high one. It was about seventy thousand dollars. They were not in a position to pay for it and it was outside of the plan. It shows what the case may be. And, you know, we legally had absolutely no obligation to anything. But our perspective is that this is a dedicated employee. They're there, they're working very hard. We're investing our own million dollars in order to fight on their behalf against the hospital. And that is indicative overall of our operational philosophy, that we have a strong vision, which drives long-term success. And the employees that are there, we're going to provide them the tools and the backup and the resources and global beyond to make sure that they're able to be successful short-term, long-term.
Are there, is there specific data that you can cite to show, again, to answer the same question? What you've been able to do with staffing ratios or expense ratios, revenue, PPD, something like that? And also staffing, also like star ratings? Is there, are there specific examples where you can say, hey, we took over these buildings? And it has to be long enough to go, obviously, the impact's like a year, two or three ago where you're, especially if they're ones you're operating out that you resell. Where you've been able to make improvements and you can cite, hey, the staffing was here and it's here and the ratings were here and it's here, quality measures or something? Do you have some data that you could cite or can you get that to us?
Sure, I can tell, I mean, the star rating is, as Mark was referencing, is a, it takes sometimes two to three years for the actual overall rating to go up. But each rating has different breakups. There's a staffing, there's a quality measure and there's a fire and a third one that I always forget. That no one talks about.
There was, yeah, it's one sort of related physical plans, quality measures.
Right. So the most important ones are the staffing ratios and the health measures. Their outcomes of how quality the care provided. So in our facilities, the one we've had more than a few months, are, almost every single facility except one, the staffing ratios are above three stars. So that's all public information for Medicare, I'll have at the behalf of the sender today and afterwards. And the health, the quality measures, vast majority of facilities are four or five. And all those are also. Part of that is the team that we have, every single region has its own clinical director. So these are our ends, who understand how to provide the proper training for the local team to ensure that care is provided optimal, day in, day out. And the surveys, all the surveys are, you know, a test to the care being provided.
Well, as you indicated a few minutes ago, not that people always follow the system, but the Iowa reimbursement system kind of encourages staffing and quality of care in the sense that if you just cut, 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 you're only going to benefit for a year or two. Because they're just going to look at your cost report and they're going to lower your reimbursement then. So you almost have to, which is a good system.
Very different.
It may be helpful to explain that to me a little more, how that happens.
Sure. So it's similar in many ways in Minnesota and with the way we operate facilities. And the idea is that in order to maximize the reimbursement for the long-term care residents, which this facility has a vast majority percentage of, the state incentivizes to provide more staff, which in theory should be better care, which that's arguable, but in general, that's the system. As well as to provide a more, provide more services to take individuals who require more services and provide the services. So the pattern in general is a system. And in Minnesota, where we operate, Rochester being two hours away, is a very similar system. So if you look at our star ratings in Minnesota, the quality measures, staffing measures, there are at least all three, majority of four or five. So that attests to staffing patterns where there, which are very similar to we have here. And the quality measures, which are outcome of the quality of clinical care being provided would be very similar to there. So here, because in fact, we have the same regional team that all we see.
Okay. Is there anything that would impede you as a company from, you know, timely completing this purchase, like purchasing another portfolio? And a lack of dry capital, survey issues of buildings, staffing, resources, anything like that? Financing, requisites, you know, the debt and equity, it sounds like you have all that lined up. Just anything we should know, we should know about the issue.
The way we grew our company at the beginning.
And how would you try this facility? What would be the capital stack?
Yeah. Seven or eight years ago, where we started out, it was traditionally private equity. So we put in our own capital as well as raised money from friends, family, I know, the division, the traditional model. And that's, I think that worked out well. So we provided returns, we were almost happy. But once we got bigger to where today, that's not something really neat. Especially for a relatively small transaction, which this is relative to other acquisitions. So for the equity for this piece, it would be, it would be a disinterable capital. We had a number of very large capital to complete events in the last six months. So that's, that's outcome for that. As far as debt, we have a relationship with many very lenders that we've closed over time. From MB to IB to Raystone, et cetera, et cetera. So we're a very wide relationship base with various debt lenders that are very happy with our current portfolio. And we'd be happy to lend on this facility, which is not the easiest thing. Because oftentimes, the combination of small purchase pricing, we find is under ten million dollars. There's only, there's very few lenders who'll lend on this, kind of how the space works. Combination with a turnaround, the number of lenders that will lend on a purchase of less than ten million dollars and a turnaround is a very small sample size. So if you've done those before and you've been successful, those lenders will work on you. If you haven't, they won't. So for us, you know, thank God, that's the type of portfolios we've built. So we have those relationships and we're happy to continue them.
Okay. And then specifically describe your, as much as you know now, sort of what diligence you've been able to complete, what diligence you, what kinds of diligence items you still need to complete. And then if you know it already, how you're planning for this specific transaction to address? Sort of the union moving to non-union after the sale, the employee benefits, the vacation plan, the PTO, the ten-year, all that kind of stuff. If you, if you know, you know, what you're specifically planning to do in this facility? And what's been sort of your background?
So we have unions at many of our facilities. Definitely two in Wisconsin, three in Minnesota. So we're very familiar with unions. As long as there is a favorable and open dialogue, that's something we're very likely to be working with. We're not necessarily saying we'll do it with them because we have them and we're comfortable working with reasonable unions. As far as benefits, I'd be happy to send our typical benefit package to them corporate. It's around in front of me, but I'd be happy to send that.
It'd probably be helpful, right? Yeah, if you could do that. Maybe like your, like we talked about, maybe your star ratings across the board. We can look them up too, but maybe that, maybe your average staffing, what it was, what it is now, when you took over and like the start rating, what it was, you took over and maybe a year or two later, what it was.
Probably.
And then the staffing ratios too, and then also the employee benefits. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Maybe if you speak to also the employees that have been there for a long time, that have accrued, you know, PTO and then how do you address that today? Does that come through, you know, is that something you negotiate in this transaction? You have shown it?
Yeah, there's various, I mean, there's no one way of doing it. Often the typical way is that whatever's been accrued, then the seller provides as credit. And then that goes into, into the next year for the employees to keep it. Just as a, from the previous settlement. That's typical, but there's various ways of doing it.
We also look at the insurance, what's the timeframe for current employees to go on health insurance?
Day one.
Day one.
Yeah, there's only.
If there were certain things that you might discover during diligence that would include you guys from moving forward? Perhaps think of other transactions you've done in the past. What would be the sort of things that would be like deal killers for you guys? Or would be real issues if you found them during diligence? If you can think of some.
Sure. We, as I mentioned, we, our portfolios are built on turnaround facilities. So we're very familiar with how to go about, what to look for, what things are deal killers, as Mark says. The things that have been challenging and have caused things to not work out have been material adverse changes. Define as, for example, there's an eye chain where the state comes in and says the immediate jeopardy, something happened where that's kind of one of the most severe levels of survey. If that occurs, then that has very large implications and you very much can't come to deal. So that's one thing. Other things can be key poison. There are certain individuals we identify that are core in order to bring the transition to a long-term success. And towards them, they decide not to stay there, that's a big challenge. Because I mean, in the last second, you're just going to find someone who don't know if it's going to work out enough because they have not been able to turn here, so they have the knowledge of the facility.
Yeah, we also like to say, nobody buys a facility like this and pulls up at the bus, you know, from another town with a bunch of employees. And just finding good people is a hard.
Employees are the ones running day in, day out, providing the care. If key employees leave, it's very challenging. There was, in a joking, but not a joking manner, there was a facility where we were very interested. It was in Minnesota, which is one of our core states. And we found out in diligence that it was grounds for drug smuggling. So that, no joke. So that turned out not to work out.
Does it work with that?
Not quite.
And again, for those not as familiar with the skilled nursing industry, so an immediate jeopardy situation, I would imagine, is an issue like it is for many of, you know, buyers that we work with and sellers for that matter. And maybe you can elaborate that a little more. Like if something like that were to occur, doesn't, I think one of the things that you would, that would be a problem for you is, first of all, if you, if another immediate jeopardy occurs or that immediate jeopardy's not fixed, it could go on a special focus list and then be, you know, noted as one of the tougher facilities in the country. And then there's more oversight, it's hard to, it's hard to maintain staffing. You actually have to have more staffing in order to monitor. That's, that's really the sort of thing, right? And it's tough to get financing.
Correct.
The lending and also that the state and federal government is not paying for it. It'd be seizure of funds. Decertification, ban on admission, ban on payment.
Right. So it's a very, very serious thing.
Okay. Kind of went through the list of the questions there. Do you have some questions for the Kelly? And then I'll ask them if they have some questions for you.
Sure, sir. If the board members are focused here in my chair, what is it that you're looking for? What are the most important things for you as far as the new awards are concerned?
I guess from my standpoint, Frank, my assessment is that the residents are cared for and that they're the most supporting individuals in this whole process. Is that they're, they're secure, that they have knowledge that.
Have you toured the facility?
Yes. I just remember, Brian, you reminded me of a question. Can you describe your experience as a group, maybe some specifics on how you deal? Because there are some resident care in our facility, that sort of specific type of care. So what's been your experience with that?
We have very specialties in our facilities, from providing trade care to memory care, et cetera. Having a specific unit just for mental health, it's not something that we have. From a standpoint of operational standpoint, there's a, the way we look at it, it's very important. But it's not materially different than the other tempresses we have. There's a knowledge base that comes from local staff and we're similarly required, but it's not a different skill set required to operate that than the other specialties we have.
Is this something you're dedicated to maintaining?
What we see there is something, there's a strong need and financially, it is viable to maintain. Therefore, we'll maintain it. I think it knows one of the questions as far as which residents to keep. Any, our perspectives, any resident as a real payer source, that actually, funds are being provided through the state, then those who we keep all the. Obviously, if someone does no payer source, that would help to get one, we can, but they can't.
It sounds like there would not be a concerted effort to raise up one type of care, like let's say, not psych versus psych. We'd have no reason to at this point in time to have a different desire for a different mix.
Correct. What we see is one of the key needs of this community, that the facility's providing is the same care. And our intention is to very much continue that and find ways to enhance it.
Any other questions for the, did everybody have a chance to really address his first question? What's important to, I know that was important.
Yeah, I mean, I say, I mean, I share with Frank, the resident is the most important thing. I'm also really concerned about the treatment of employees. I'm very curious about the health insurance plans that you'll have. But I know that information will be forthcoming.
Your philosophy, I think one of the questions I had was, as far as integrating residents, especially people with disabilities into the community. Are you supportive of that or do you do efforts at your other facilities that encourage people, I guess, within their communities being more integrated into the community? You know, the facility sits outside on the edge of town. I guess, I think a transportation sometimes is an issue for us over the years too, as far as involving them in activities and taking them on trips and that type of thing. Is that something you support or encourage or?
Every single one of our buildings has at least one or two dedicated, own activity buses and take various trips around. Each building, you need as far as the type of residents, what they can and cannot do physically, mentally. And we assess what can be done and then we provide activities and transportation dedicated to the residents. Is that something we do in all facilities?
Is any of your facilities located like in a rural area like ours is?
Sure. Yeah. In just part facility, March, in Medina, Minnesota, which is. In just a part facility in March in Wadena, Minnesota, which is a very, very small town. What was the name of it?
Wadena.
Wadena, okay.
It's got some history.
Quite smaller than this one. Ryanlander is smaller in Wisconsin, Oshkosh is smaller. We're definitely small, so.
You said the average size is one ten. Does the county have any questions for Dan?
Eric, did you have anything?
No, off the top of my head.
I kind of really liked the emphasis that you had put on the employees. And I know there's still some information to get yet, but that was appreciative to me anyway.
We have employees in the crowd that are concerned about their welfare and stuff, so you're giving them some good information. I appreciate that.
What would it look like for the employees as far as, would this be, maybe you're still trying to determine this, would this be part of your sort of Minnesota region? Is there a regional that would oversee like Minnesota and this?
Correct.
Okay. So your closest facility is?
Hour forty-five.
That's all it is to register? Okay, so that makes sense.
As we enter New State, then we just continue expanding. Initially, the Minnesota regional team is very close, so they'd be very apt to oversee this facility as we grow. In Iowa, we just have a dedicated team to Iowa.
Are there any facilities in Iowa that you're currently looking at, or is that kind of confidential?
I think we're looking at that, we're very active looking, and a lot of them are as far along as a, as a.
And this facility's, the acquisition of this facility's not contingent on anything else you're doing. So it's a bolt-on in a lot of senses for you, as far as your capital stack, as far as your management, because of the way your philosophy is, where you're not trying to run back and forth from here from Chicago all the time. It's not that super difficult for you to add on to your Minnesota operations.
Minnesota team is very similar. The Wisconsin team is very similar.
It doesn't sound like, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't sound like the Minnesota operations is in a, is in a really super difficult place where you have to, it sounds like you have the bandwidth to take this on, it sounds like you have those calling the right track to take this on.
All of them are doing very well. Wadena, we just look over and make time. It's not getting from this panel.
So you're out of Chicago?
Correct, corporate's in Chicago, and then, as Mark was mentioning, any facilities that, the regional team, the regional teams there, in Wisconsin every single week, Minnesota every single week, but they're, then we could come back to.
You can give me an overview of what your IT services or focus on IT facility?
I mean, we standardize across our platform, so we use PointClick for mobile, for charting, for GLEP. We have a company that we use for remote services, like in this case, we're in Georgia. So they provide all the technology back office and standardization as far as remote access, et cetera. It's all standardized, all the services, wireless and all those things. And given that the back office is in Chicago, the technology deployed needs to be sophisticated enough that in real time, we can have information on that, et cetera.
And what, what is your estimate, I mean, Frank, we all agree moving forward with the sale of this facility?
We've outlined in a lot of our time, so we're going to go through purchases and sale agreement, and the due diligence, and then the close. The timelines are not very clear.
How do you work with the buyer and seller together as far as that transition? Or what has it been, your experience in other transactions, to make it as seamless or smooth as possible?
I mean, it's about communication, it's most important. Coming in and communicating exactly what you intend, what's the vision, getting everyone aboard. And this is the current situation. Certain things aren't working, they've been changed, to be very honest about it. And this is the vision we have, and let's all work together to get there. As far as logistics, we, we transitions quite often, like last week, we're once, there was logistics, how to do it, and we're very kind of systematized with doing it. Really help with that communication. If everyone's on board with the vision, the communication's open and honest, that kind of, the process becomes much smoother.
And not just open and honest with us as board of supervisors, but with staff as well? Have those meetings and?
Of course. I mean, when it's open and honest to everyone, but as far as the logistical transitions, really with the staff.
Yes, thank you.
When you've done purchases in the past, have you looked at, when you look at the facility, and have you looked at doing any deducts from your price of access based on what you see in the facility?
Things that, just thinking of. The things that could lead to it, are there's any material things that, for example, let's say there is an eye chain now, right? Something that has a material effect clinically and performance-wise long-term, does it affect the residents' reputation? So at that point, there's two options. Either we say, this is too much, we're not going to walk away, or say, look, this is a material change, obviously it'll affect the price. So that's one scenario. Or if there are, this third-party requires, find something. So if the third-party comes in and says, oh, the roof is defixed, or the, you know, there's environmental issues that need addressing, those are things that come on in the third-party works.
Some of that can be caused by the process itself. So how would you propose to the county that, you know, we address that as far as maintaining continuity as much as possible? What would you do to help the process along? I mean, obviously, closing quickly would be one factor, but just, I don't have a specific thought in mind, but are there things that you guys do to help mitigate a lot of the disturbance of, you know, within the process?
Do you see things happen along?
Well, sometimes we have transactions, we just, you know, had this challenge earlier this week with, you know, this is different because the public knows of the sale. This was a private sale in Florida, it was a residential facility, but, or it's a memory care facility. But the buyer was complaining there was a drop in the occupancy, and the seller was complaining that, well, you know, he caused the drop in occupancy by coming into the facility too often, and also didn't delay the closing for a month. So now the employees don't know who's in charge, and they have a special rental program, one of those, you know, they raise the rents eight hundred dollars for the residents, and they set that rent for life. So if you live there for the next ten years, if your rent never goes up, but you're paying eight hundred dollars more than you would have otherwise, so anyway, it's like a one-time increase, anyway. And the facility's making a lot of money from that, but then the employees are afraid, they don't want to sell that to the residents. It's a good thing if the new person's going to come in and stop the program, or get rid of those residents, or so they're not selling it, and then the revenue went down. So there was this argument between the buyer and seller, well, it's kind of like the orphans stood before the judge and pleaded for mercy, and the judge is like, yeah, but you killed your parents, you know, so you can't plead for mercy because you're an orphan because you killed your parents. So the seller's saying, well, you killed the occupancy by doing this, and the revenue. So how do you mitigate that risk? I mean, there's always that risk, but how does your group propose to say, hey, we don't want to kill the operations through our process, and there's some things you could do that maybe obviate that, or at least mitigate the risk?
The challenge being that it's open, everyone knows about it. That in itself is a unique challenge. The only advice I would give is just keep status quo. So don't do anything drastically different than it is now. And as we, given that it knows about it, there's nothing we can really do, so. In Mark's example, oftentimes, it's when the staff, in most transactions, the staff doesn't know. So when they can win, then a lot of turmoil occurs and affects all the operations financially. In this situation, the cats have the bag, so everyone knows, right? I don't believe from our side there's anything, but I.
Some of the open and honest communication, like you said, open communication about what the benefit's going to be, keeping, you know, keeping employees, you know, and making sure that there's stability in the staffing.
Correct. Make sure the staff is in a sense of state.
I don't have anything.
Any other questions? Susan, any questions?
I want to thank you very much. I thought it was a very good, clean and laid it right out there.
Thank you, Brad, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All the efforts that you put into coming.
Oh, one other, I have one question. Would you, especially since you're so close, would you be open to a couple of the county members coming to your, some of your, like, maybe the Rochester facility or something?
If not during survey season, we'd be real.
Yeah. Or you're on for an IJ, yeah. We're talking about being disruptive, right? We don't want to be the opposite. So I don't know if you're open to that, but it's an hour and a half away, that would be.
So if we do come up with other questions, do we work through you? Okay, all right, in case there are some things that we've overlooked.
And then you'll get us. Yeah, sure. Thank you for your time. Thank you for taking the extra effort, planes, trains, and automobiles to get out here.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, sure.
Glad you didn't get caught in the rain. Thank you for your responsibility.
Thank you very much.
Have a safe trip.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Susan. Appreciate it.
That's the end of our meeting.
You got any sort of, go through with this, or?
I'm free to talk.
What you may.
It's free, it can be an open meeting. It's open anyway, yeah. It's an open meeting, so. It's an open meeting, so it's like, yeah.
Okay, well, no, I was just going to say, I like the fact that he's, you know, this group, this building, a regional platform, I like his, I actually like the fact that he doesn't see himself as any of his investment-type partners, as being the operational expertise that he relies on the regional managers, any on-site staff. I like that. Rather than, I'm going to show you guys how operated nursing, you know, come in here, you know, it didn't sound like it at all. I think it's great that you can go see his facilities, they're right here, and see what they're doing, so you can feel comfortable. Because sometimes there's a disconnect between what he says that they're doing, and you can sense that when you walk in, and it could be that's even better than you thought, right? So it could be that there are systems that he's putting in place that are fantastic, and you sense that when you walk in, wow, this is what he did. It sounds like he's further along in his diligence. He didn't bring up due diligence three or four times as the first group did. And it sounds like they're buying this as actually a bolt-on to what they already have, rather than the first group trying to find something to bolt this on to with. So in those senses, I would leave it at the second. Is their price higher? Their price is higher. So we have been down the path with them twice, and they didn't close either time. But I don't, but I want to put a huge gigantic asterisk next to that to say that both transactions were extremely difficult. One was a, is three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand square foot former hospital in northern Kentucky, Covington, Kentucky, with a little E, some of that nursing, only one quarter of it, and the rest of the building was vacant, and they had some really troubled people in the building. They weren't just mentally ill, but they were, it was kind of a mess of a situation. And so when they, once they went to the facility and saw it, they said, no, it's not for us. And actually, we found maybe just the one buyer in the world that would buy it later on. And then the second transaction, frankly, has never sold, the one in Missouri. So it's another situation, very tough situation. Not everything we sell is, you know, easy to sell, and these were tough buildings, and there were material adverse changes, that's why you mentioned that. Facilities are still not sold.
There were three of them, two were good, there was a problem, and that one, the one, became a bigger problem in diligence, and, you know, so, you know, that's.
You know, I believe in giving, you know, anybody else in life that's been given a chance, second chance I have, then I know, thank God. So I'm just, I'm not going to use that against him. I'm just being honest with you that it's been a couple of times, but I sense that he's a little bit more committed to this process than.
Well, you kind of look, it looks like they want to regionalize the upper Midwest there.
Right.
The next process, we still look at these two companies as potential purchases. And based on what their feedback is, how do we, what's the point is, if the board decides that they want to sell, what's the point when we make a decision of which company to go?
So I think what I would do if I were in your shoes is, is keep it all in mind for the moment. I would take your most clinically astute person, and maybe your most financially astute person in the room, that you have at your disposal, maybe it's the ED of the facility, Ariane, one of you, or some, and maybe, maybe at least two people, it could be three, and go see facilities, maybe Minnesota, and maybe one in Minnesota, one in Wisconsin, if they're close. And then, if you have the ability to do so, go see a couple of the first groups down in Georgia. If you can, I would recommend going to see facilities that they've run for at least a year or two. Because the last thing you want to do is go to a facility you bought last month, and you all, you hear the old times, well, we're fixing that, we're fixing that, we're fixing that, you know, it's not how it could be used at a big store. Wait for the information from the two groups that's been promised from them on the data, on maybe just staffing ratios that are effectuated as well as other programs, and PTO that are played that's, which are not so big, all that, it's a concern or question. So let's, you know, see that data. And then, you know, frankly, when you go through that type of a process, particularly the tours, a lot will come to light and rise to the top. And what happens a lot of the time, if not all the time, is, you know, you'll have a real sense, you'll have a clear sense of which buyer's better for you.
I think the tours could be maybe beneficial. I don't know if I'm sold on that there, because the end result, you got five people sitting up here who's going to make the decision.
I understand.
And five people are here aren't going to go up and do the tours.
Unless you want to, you know, if you can, you know, you know, five of you can go road trip.
Road trip. We've done it for highway, or roads.
Yeah. That would be a closed door.
Do you know anybody who gets a bus? Have to take Tim along.
I guess, I think what Frank, and maybe you answered his, is where do we go from today? I mean, we're getting the information we want. Somewhere, we're going to make a decision, when are we going to get to that point? Are you?
Well, the other, you know, so I would say that I would encourage you to conduct your tours in the next seven days, and then you could, you know, and then I would say, negotiate an LOI with the one that you like the most, and be under LOI, today's the twenty-sixth, what's the date? Twenty-sixth, by the end of the first week of, well, the other fourth of July. So maybe the second week in July would be really good to have a letter of intent signed.
So they need to get their information to us fairly soon too. I was going to say, so we can have everything to.
Another aspect also would be, I think, relevant and would make much sense is to, you know, get Bruce up here for Beacon, and he's, you know, and see, and see how he is with, with the key employees in the tour, and how he is with Eric as far as, you know, maybe we push him a little more on his little hedge in the LOI as far as the capex number, and, you know, you'll probably give him more sense of, hey, he's very interested also, or maybe like, you know, there's still a lot of questions where it seems like Beacon is still kind of up here and pre-talks a couple steps ahead of them as far as, you know.
Yeah, so there's two different, two different ways you could take this. And one would be a lot more timely, and perhaps it's the route I would take. And I don't know what your county property laws have to say about this and that sort of thing, but if you're leaning toward one versus the other, to maybe start with that, get their data, analyze it, go see their facilities, and as long as everything checks, just kind of go with them. And, you know, again, for me, Dan came to me, Bruce did, Bane talked about, we need all this due diligence, right, right? They own in the area, so for me, they would be the logical one to go see their facilities, and if you like what you see, and the data comes in. and if you like what you see and the data comes in good, and you're satisfied with that and he's at a higher price, just go with them. And if there's still a question, then investigate number two and put them on a comparison sheet and that sort of thing. But if one is clearly, in your minds, it is in my mind, but you have to make up your minds, you know, that this is, appears to be, based on these interviews, the one that's the lead horse for various important factors, then why take the time to investigate two?
That's the point I was getting, Jim.
Yeah. I don't know what your county, some counties don't like, you know, to favor or eliminate one until you go through an entire process, so I don't, I don't know what your property laws like. So are you about to sort of go in one direction if you think that's right?
Well, Pete, I, Eric, I think we were able to do that.
Yeah. We vote on bids, and so that's the process, you know, the transparency, and after the bids come in, it's within more purview to make that decision, which you want to go forward with, if any, and negotiate with. And I think you're, just from a negotiation standpoint and transaction standpoint, you're certainly justified in pursuing the bid that's the highest bid, right? I mean, if one bid was at a much higher number and you're pursuing the lower bid, you kind of have to tell yourselves a lot of things to convince yourselves to go with a lot. But if it's the higher bid and they came to the meeting and they own in the area and you can go see them, and they have their capital stack lined up and the management lined up, and they've expressed a real desire to move forward and they've addressed to your satisfaction the employee issues, if that's all the case, then maybe that's the direction we should head in. And I think you still should go with the timing of things, tour next week and LOI within the next two and a half weeks. How does that process and timing set with everybody?
Okay with myself. I can see, yeah. Decide who's going and who wants to go, I guess.
Anyway, I guess your tours might show you something, I'm not really that. I mean, that's a short drive up to Rochester, obviously. But the thing is, you're going to send two up there and you got five going to make decisions.
I think we can send as many as, maybe if it's multiple tours, I think we should do that.
Yeah, I would say as many as can go, should go. I was only saying that in our experience, you should bring someone along with you, and maybe it's one of you, I'm not sure, but someone who's extremely clinically minded so that...
I think we have staff that's appropriate.
Yeah, for sure. Just because they'll know in twenty minutes what they think of the...
Yeah.
That's all, so all five of you could go and your R N or your E D or whatever, just make sure you take some...
Or none of us. None of us in the clinical and the specialist. I said, or none of us.
I'd be more interested...
The people that are the specialists.
Of the specialists to come back and tell me what they saw.
Okay.
And, you know, it's, it's more of an observation than a question there.
Know the business and know what to look for and what to...
That's fine.
So than us, but it's up to individuals if they'd like to go too.
If you want to go, we get scheduled on the fourth for you.
Yeah.
I think you want to go along, don't you?
You know, this is your process, so...
Well, if we get the information by the end of the week and we have something to evaluate, too, so that we've got everything and look and see if that is the direction we want to go.
Go up there and come back.
Yeah, that one's an easy one.
I'm going to go.
Georgia might be a little different.
And, you know, and again, you know, in your heart and hearts, just if you, like if Tom, I'm not putting, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if you're going to rely more on what our end and your current, your facility says than you would observe, then that's what's important to you, and maybe if you want to go or, you know, whatever, do what, do what's going to, do what you're going to need to give a yes or a thumbs up or a thumbs down, though, yeah.
I feel more comfortable with one of our staff going, one or two.
A couple, for sure. Yeah, I think they need to, I think, too.
You know what to observe and so forth.
Yeah, but if, whoever wants to go, I guess, really kind of makes the...
Well, I mean, we could, could, you know, have two of us go up.
Sure.
Two hours differential and take a tour and two other ones to go up after that.
The fourth.
Yeah. Or we could go with some, a mix of staff with us, too, I thought there's options that we can take.
I don't know, that's something that we can figure out who wants to go.
Yeah.
I think the key part right now is to have a staff member go up there.
Yeah.
To Rochester, that two-hour drive.
That's more important than board of supervisors.
And please understand, I want to make it even more clear, we're agnostic as to who buys the facility, as long as there are quality people and you're satisfied with them. I think we've got two quality groups here. I'm just looking at from a probability standpoint, a timing standpoint, when one buyer is saying, we've got a lot of diligence to still do, and we've got to find other facilities to buy in the area, we don't know if they're ever going to find other facilities to buy in the area, that may never happen. So that for me is kind of a huge differential factor between the two groups.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Mr. Management, anybody?
I have one question. What's, what's the name of the facility in Rochester?
Oh, I have to...
Do we know?
Yeah, they submitted it.
The name of the company is P R I T O K, Pretox.
Yeah, but the facility, yeah, they're listed, I think.
You know what, they're listed, okay, never mind.
They know who it is.
Just go on Medicare.gov and...
They already know who it is. The key people know who it is.
Yeah, you'll know.
Maybe, okay, yeah.
Anything else to come before us?
Listen to adjourn.